Hello. Can I have an order of hamburgers and fries? I think that the new classroom is helping the new students because without this classroom, substudents probably wouldn't have gone into preschool this year, but with this new classroom and all the other new classrooms, they're allowed or given the opportunity to attend preschool this year. It was very exciting. I started coming up with ways that how we're going to set up the classroom and everything was up to me and then Tiffany, the family educator for the PM teacher, to decide. And classes like in college you're taught that like at the very start, like kids, young ages, that's how they begin to learn. They learn like how to brush their teeth, all these things at school, like in preschool, and it's the fundamental for their learning. So we do a home visits. We do four every year and then we do, or every quarter, and then we do an initial home visit before they even start preschool. We get to meet the families, the kids at the start, so that way we can already start to form relationships before they even start preschool. Today I have a new student and I met her on Friday and we already have a bond. She was excited to come to school when she saw, like she saw me and then so she felt safe. So I think they make a huge impact in the kids' learning. Here at Roper, we're already, we work with the elementary school teachers. We have meetings together, so that way when they go to kindergarten, they already know how to do all that. So they kind of work together hand in hand. Preschool is not required in the state of Nebraska, but LPS knows how important it is for kids to get the education this early, so that way they can be able to do these things in elementary school and high school.
The Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, September 23rd is called to order. April, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Present.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Here.
Ms. Momgaard?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Mr. Shavastiv?
Present.
The Open Meetings Act is posted in the entry for those who would like to read it. We have minutes from our September 9th board meeting for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they stand approved as published. Next, we have item 6.1, the Vitality update. Michelle.
Sorry. You know, anybody who works at LPS, Michelle Welch. Our wellness facilitator needs no introduction. She's been here 14 years, trying to build up our employee and student wellness programs. I've gotten to work with her pretty closely over the last year and a half on the Vitality platform. So I just wanted to thank her for all her work on that as part of our team at LPS. Also want to thank the EHA for letting us be part of the Vitality platform and be part of this pilot to help kind of lead the way with employee wellness. With that, I'll just turn it over to Michelle to kind of talk about more of the specifics about what's going on with wellness and the Vitality platform.
I am much shorter than Blake. All right. So first, I would like to mention that, you know, I've been, as Blake said, I've been with the district for 14 years. Before this, I've been a dietitian for 20 years and did corporate wellness development prior to this. And when I took this job, we really focused on students first, as we always do in LPS, but we did what we could for staff. And we've done lots of grants. We did about $1.2 million in grants and all kinds of different things because we're kind of, if you build it, they will come, kind of a school district. And everybody's sitting in the back rows behind us. I've worked with pretty much everybody that's sitting in the back row. I don't know if there's any of you I haven't worked with in one way or another, because everything we do touches everybody. And when I go to talk to UNL, to our stu-, to people that are going to school for education, I talk to them about every piece of LPS touches wellness, because it's everything from how we build benefits to how everything else that we do, but then also how we do things with students. But we were always a little bit short on the, on the staff wellness side of things. And so I really want to talk about the amazing things that have changed for us in this past 18 months, and particularly the Vitality pieces, but we'll throw a couple other pieces in here too with us. So the thing that no one has seen really until today is how far we've come within this past, just really eight months in the Vitality piece. And I really want to talk about how we've basically put 300, over $300,000 into the pockets of our staff, really since January. And, you know, I think that's great, but I'm even more excited, as you well know, because I'm the wellness lady, that I really would like to always talk about more about how we really also support people's health, because the money is great and it drives people to wellness. But to me, it's the most important that if that is the thing that gets people to say, "Yeah, that kind of nudged me to go take care of myself," or "Maybe I went and got a mammal because it's going to give me some points," whatever it did to be able to get people to really take care of their health, that's really what I'd like to have happen. And I always really kind of joke that I always say, you know, come for the pie, stay for the broccoli. I always try to make things be fun, and I really find if you make things fun, people will come. I really want to make sure and mention, none of this would happen without all the people that were on this slide. And there's just, it's always dangerous to mention people because there's always so many more people than what's on the slide, but we started this particular effort with this ad hoc insurance committee. And you can see the people that started it when we had Don Mayhew and Kathy Danik. Of course, we've had a switch over, but now Mara and Pooch are on with Dr. Rowner and myself, and Dr. Skretta and Blake are on the air with us. But we continue to work forward in looking at what is going to work the best for our educators, work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, work with Educators Health Alliance, in really moving forward what's happening for taking care of our staff to our very best effort to really finally have resources to really support the health of our staff. Because if our staff isn't healthy, everything that's happening for our staff's health rolls down to what happens for kids. And we always really tried to tie together what we're doing for staff wellness and what we're doing for student wellness, but having a little extra boost for what we're doing for staff wellness really matters. What we were able to really get accomplished after we worked really for a long time with Blue Cross Blue Shield was getting this approval for this Vitality pilot. And I am, as a person that's developed wellness for companies in the past, I've never been a real fan of a computer-based program. However, this is the best computer-based program I've ever seen, as far as when we really think about what we have available to us. It really focuses specifically on your personal health and talking specifically to you. When you go on and you log into this piece of this support system, it really customizes to you in amazing ways. It keeps your information private. It's extremely protected. People, the biggest complaint people have is they have to have this ridiculously long password because it's so privacy-protected. They've never probably had this long of a password on anything else that they've had. But it's because we really protect people's privacy within this. But it's an amazing program in the sense that it really does fit customizable to them, but it's also customizable to us, because we were able to take the programs that we are doing within LPS, build them into this program, but also bring over, I always call it programs, EHA Wellness and Vitality. I kind of call them cousins. I have them have a family reunion in the back room to be able to also highlight and bring people into EHA Wellness as well. So if people are used to doing EHA Wellness, we are able to bring over and promote the programs in EHA Wellness, so that the programs can work together instead of feeling like they're in competition for attention. It makes them kind of partner that way. Again, we had lots of different tie-in. I work with Middy Bruback and her team all the time on communications. Vitality marketing have been a big piece of things. But the other thing is, with two computer-based programs, we really want to make sure that people aren't just spending their whole life on devices. And so as long as I've been with the district, we've done a lot of things around Wellness Wednesday in one way or another. I really am trying to emphasize to our staff to really focus specifically on really getting on their device once a week for this program, so that they aren't just really spending their whole life digging around on their, on their device all the time, but to really not forget about their health once a week, getting on, tracking, watching some videos, doing some education for themselves within this. But the thing that's really great about Vitality is it's not only focusing on our spouse, it is on our staff, but it's also including spouses, which the other program really does not do. So we have 1,700 spouses that are also welcome to this. Now, there's some limitations right now because we haven't previously had a lot of contact information. So unless your spouse is getting you in there and working you in there, a lot of times we're not catching as many spouses as we'd like, but that's something that we're looking to grow. But any spouse that's on our LPS medical or dental can be part of this program, and it's been really a nice piece as we've gotten things rolling. Here's what's really cool. We all know teachers are crazy busy during the day, as is all of the other staff that we have, but this program meets you wherever you're at and helps you find those little gaps where you can take part in activities. And look at, in eight months, the amount of education that we've had people take part in. When was the last time you saw teachers attend 12,000 webinars on their own for fun? 6,000 videos, do jumpstart prompts for themselves, you know, do goal trackers for themselves. It's really engaging them truly around their health, and they choose all these different pieces. It's not everyone's doing the same thing. It's you choose about your health, what you want to be looking at. But then this is also showing around those other pieces that have already been established within EHA Wellness and all the different activity events that we do as part of our program, allowing us to also be able to say, "Well, what are other things that they're already part of our program that we're also tracking?" So we can tie those pieces together and look at those participation pieces and, huh, how is this impacting how pieces come together? I also, this is a little bit busy of a slide, but I also like the fact that we can track and look at what areas are people interested in. So as I build programs going forward, I also can say, "Well, what are areas that people are looking at?" And we can kind of, again, emphasize that as we build programs going forward. A neat part of this program is that people don't have to do a lot of logging. It doesn't require a lot of heavy lifting on that front, because you can tie your fitness device to this program. So over half of our staff have tied whether their Apple Watch, their Fitbit, whatever device that they use to track their health, has tied to this. And what that also allows them to do is they get higher points as they take part in this. And you can literally look at that. It's not just light workouts, but it's, you know, they get points for standard and advanced workouts, and we kind of get a chance to be able to see, that's a lot of workouts in eight months that people have been able to track, but without having to, you know, go in and copiously, you know, log that, that really just tracks that for them. So it's really exciting that we have that ability to be able to kind of see that. And, you know, what's also cool is, you know, you think about, well, gosh, do we really get teachers engaged over the summer? You can really, you know, our staff when school's out, look at that engagement during the summer. It's really nice that we keep people going. Okay? And then the other piece that this program allows for us is it gives us a book of business as a comparison, because if all you have is a line on a graph, as we're looking at compiled data that doesn't have any names attached to it, but our overall, you know, number of the thousands of people taking part in this, it gives us a comparison of when you look at Vitality's other customers and their book of business, well, how does our data compare? And it helps us know, how are we doing and how, you know, how do we look? And if we have higher risk areas, how's our program doing? I always am asking when I'm looking at things and when I have these questions on here, I'm always asking myself, is this program working? Are we reaching the right people with what we're doing? And then is this program having an impact and what do we need to do next? And so those are questions I'm always asking myself as a, as a person that develops programs, where do we need to be going next? This just gives you kind of an idea of where we're at as far as where the people that signed up in this program weren't just signing up and then forgetting about it. Over half our people reached at least award level status, which gave them nice, you know, extra accolades in there, but even if people didn't get to that point, a lot of people earned what they called bucks, which is an opportunity where they really, we had $131,000 that came to people's pockets just in the bucks category, much less than the award level. So everybody that took part could get to some level within that. But it all ended up adding up to over $303,000 just in our little tiny eight-month period. And if, you know, you guys all know about schools, how many programs do we ever start in schools in a January timeframe? It's just unheard of for us to launch anything in a January timeframe in schools, because we start stuff at the school year. To get this level of engagement in a program that started in January, that we shotgunned out, finding out that we were going to have it starting in October, November, got it built, and got it going in January, and have this level of engagement, it's just pretty remarkable. And the people from Vitality, Blue Cross Blue Shield also tell us, we're doing very well. I didn't want to leave EHA Wellness on the floor on this, because I wanted to show you where we were at as far as participation in that. We did have 1,065 people reach Elevate Status this year, but again, they had reshaped their program, and that program particularly did not have any gift cards for folks this past year. And so they had almost a, almost a 16, 18-month stretch without any rewards in that program, other than like small kind of trinkety gifts. Having Vitality to span that gap with instant gift cards was a game changer for us. So we were very fortunate to have the combination where other districts did not have that because we were a pilot. But what's also nice is we are able to, now in this year, now that I, after I learned after eight months, I was like, oh, I know what I'm adding to the program going forward. Now I'm able to give people points also for taking parts in other pieces, like Weight Watchers and Headspace and Money Wealth, so I can also merchandise those programs to other people and get people engaged in other parts of the program to support other pieces of the program. And what's really cool is, because EHA Wellness has learned from Vitality, because they're cousins, but they're also cousins that are in competition with each other in a, in a healthy way, it's moved them to move to digital gift cards that are across the year now too. And if you know anything about how things work in LPS, you know, we have a nomadic society here. We have lots of people that move from school to school and support lots of different buildings. To go from a physical gift card that we had to try and get to people in their, in their buildings and figure out where they are, shifting to digital gift cards for our staff makes so much sense, and I am thrilled to not be chasing people around with physical gift cards anymore. So that is a massive improvement that's going to be happening for the 25th, 25, 26-year. So I'm very thrilled that Vitality kind of inspired them to be moving in that direction. And then I also want to talk about this Vitality crossover, because this is a collaboration that we had actually with Brian Health and Alpha Fee as a grant. And this is kind of a funny story I have to tell you. So when we had this grant come through Brian Health, and, you know, Brian Health's a big ship, we're a big ship, and we were trying to figure out, how do we get this grant to go off? We had actually initially 80 spots for this grant, but they ended up expanding the grant because we had such an amazing response to this grant. And they ended up giving us 145 spots for this cardiac calcium screening. If you don't know what that is, it's a CT scan where they look at your carotid arteries and go down a little ways into your lungs and look to see how much plaque buildup and if you have calcium scoring in your, in your arteries, and they look at the upper part of your lungs. And because it's Alpha Fee and they wanted to look at women's heart health, and they really thought teachers is a, is a good group, and, you know, they liked LPS and supporting education, so we said, okay, we're targeting ages 50-plus, which is who is really targeted for cardiac calcium scoring. So we had 1,500 women that we targeted with this program, and I gave 1,500 women over 50 my phone number. If you give 1,500 women over 50 your phone number with a free screening, guess what happens? You get a lot of calls, because women over 50 aren't afraid to give you a call, especially when there's a free screening available. But what's great that happened with that, after me being Marcia Brady for about two weeks, is I had, we had amazing results. So what we found in this group, we had 145 people that we were able to accommodate with expanded grant funds, but we had 26% of our people come up with a moderate to very high risk, which is 37 of our staff that went back to their doctor and got additional help. And, you know, cardiac disease, especially for women, is a huge killer for us. And it's one of those things that we just don't know about until it's too late. So we are thrilled that Brian Health and Alpha Fee helped us, but what's also great is we were able to cross that over in Vitality and give people points for taking part in a cardiac, uh, cardiac screening. So I'm thrilled that we had that resource. And again, we had $18,000 in staff savings in Vitality in the, in the screenings, but if you think about one of those people going to the ER with heart pains or having a stroke, you know, how much does it cost if you have to go to the, go to the ER with that? For one person, right? A lot more than $18,000. So not only did it, did it get all these people going forward with their health, but it's also saving us a tremendous amount of cost as a health group in general, because we're getting people being active and being preventative in their health. Finally, as we look at, this is kind of giving you an idea where we're at. In our eight-month pilot, we had about 2,300 staff, and we had, or I'm sorry, 2,300 people engaged. Already within the two weeks since we've moved into cycle two, we're at 2,600 people. And so it just keeps growing. And we had about a third of the people that the program was offered to already engaged as staff. Again, we have lots, lots of room to grow in spouse land. So all the people in the back room, you need to talk to your people and get them going throughout our program, because we'd love to get more spouses engaged. I have some spouses that have been very competitive with each other. That's always also very fun to see. And then I guess I just really want to make sure that, and mentioned too, we were able to add all of these different pieces to the puzzle, as far as areas that people can get additional points, because again, as I grew and understand what this program could do, we were able to add points in these areas. And one thing that our Blue Cross Blue Shield rep for Vitality has told me, we're doing things that no one else has ever done, and I'm really trying to build this as a pilot, knowing that other school systems, if this goes from a pilot through LPS out to the greater world of education, if EHA just says, yeah, we went Vitality for everyone in the state, I want this thing built so that other schools can adapt what we already have built, and they don't have to build this, because they don't have health professionals necessarily. A lot of times it's people from the payroll department or people from other areas that are their health and wellness person as their contact. And so adding things like visits to OT, PT, Speech Path Rehab, visits to dieticians, sleep studies, all of these pieces that are really meaningful things that really help people support their health, especially, you know, visits to EAP or their counselor, that they can get points for this. Again, they're adding this privately. No one else knows that they're getting their points for these things, but they know. And they're getting points for saying, ah, you know, I really been meaning to get that sleep study done. Okay, if I get some points in Vitality, maybe I'll get that done. You know, you get your sleep study done and you find out that you have sleep apnea, you can prevent Afib, you can prevent diabetes, there's a lot of things you can prevent if you have, if you have sleep apnea and get that taken care of. So there's a lot of really expensive healthcare problems that you can prevent by doing some of these things, that you can get a little point for, a little nudge through Vitality. And then looking forward to, there are some great things that have come from this in addition, because when we have the data, it helps us to be able to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield as our insurance. You know, you can't just write grants for staff wellness, because businesses expect you to pay for that, but you can go back to your insurance provider and say, hey, insurance provider, we know you want us to be healthy because it saves you money as well as it saves us money. So we would like to be able to have risk blood pressure cuts for the schools. They said, it's a great idea, write it up for us. And so I know what I can ask them for, because I can look at our data and say, hey, we know that by our book of business, this is what we need to be able to do. So by having data to be able to help prompt those pieces and to know what we know about health from like Dr. Rowner and myself and from what we know as health experts and what we know from our data, it helps us move forward through those pieces too. I really do want to shout out Kathy Neller. She's my rep from Vitality, and she'll, we've had a lot of laughs as we've kind of worked our way through this really turbo version of Vitality, and we've been building this program throughout this year. But I just really want to tell you, you know, collaborations is where this all lives. Everything we do is a collaboration, as we do things at LPS, and I love having measurable data. I love just thinking about all the great things that we're going to be able to do going forward with this, and I really have strong hopes that we're going to be able to continue to see this happen after this year. So, questions?
Any questions?
I kind of actually.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, we, for someone who don't know, Michelle presented to our ad hoc committee this morning, and we had a lot of, a lunch hour, a lot of detail. For my, I had a couple take homes from this that I was very impressed with. I think this alone is worth all the work of the 18 months on that ad hoc committee. Number one, spouses are eligible, that it's important because spouses get together better and they, it's a positive thing, and who doesn't care about their spouse, hopefully. Second is the information was so tailored to our questions and to our needs. So we've heard in the past that our teachers are stressed. The data shows, yes, they're stressed, and more so than everybody else, so now you can tailor things to that, so we can tailor it to what our teachers are asking for and our staff, our bus drivers, our food service, everybody. And like you said, I've seen my career, a lot of wellness programs, but the data's so bad, you can't tell whether it worked. I mean, after three years, did it make a damn bit of difference? This is the stuff that makes a difference, and it's really solid data. And then this is the stuff about your, like, my health system, I used to tell students the least expensive heart attack or stroke is the one that doesn't happen, and more importantly, you don't die from the heart attack or stroke that doesn't happen. And you've got a couple examples of how that's preventable. You know, the cardiac screening, the blood pressure control, the physical activity, this is going to make our people healthier and it's going to save us money and healthcare costs. And so I'm just excited to see where this goes.
Thanks, Dr. Rowner.
So I have to admit halfway through, Michelle, I had to keep going, what's EHA and what's Vitality?
That's a great question.
So can you clarify that?
Yes. Thank you for asking that question, because it is confusing. So the way I look at it is this. So EHA Wellness is kind of more group activities, like they have challenges that are six times in the year, so everyone does the same challenge. They have a personal health assessment, and then they have a few resources that you can sign up for, like you can get free Headspace, you can get a discount on Weight Watchers, they have Money Wealth, so financial wellness, and that's kind of the bare bones of what that program is. And if you do those things and then you have your doctor sign a medical form, then you can get like a $150 gift card, or now it's going to be bumping down a little bit, but that, it basically comes down to $150 in that program. This is entirely about your personal health. You go through, you do a health risk assessment, it's going to suggest to you different areas that you could look at, although you can see all the different areas that you can focus on. So it's going to say, from your personal health assessment, these are some articles you might want to consider, some different goals you want to look at, but then it's going to give you access to all those different ones. So it's 100% personalized to you over here. You do goal setting specific to what you're interested in focusing on. So it has in there, for my people that maybe went through this and had, they did that cardiac calcium, and they found out they need to go on a statin, it has a thing where you can, I took my blood pressure meds, or I took my stat meds, and you can set a goal and you can determine how many times in a week you want it, for how many weeks, and you can do that goal, and every time you do that goal, you get points which equals money. So this is like... So, this is like super personalized to your health. This is kind of more of a group funsy theme thing. And then, I, for the kid stuff that we've been doing for years, I know what their themes are ahead, I find out from them. And I tie my kid themes to these themes. So, I do my fall, winter and spring themes tied to the EHA wellness side because these are things that everyone's doing. Where these, this is entirely tied to your own personal plan. That make...
Yeah, yeah. So, it's an incredible tool for the individual to be able to use for their, for their better health.
Right.
My question is, so if we're at 20, if we're at 2,000 or so, that's about a quarter of our staff, correct?
We're at like 30, about 33% right now that's engaged. They have to be benefits eligible to be part of it.
Is that comparatively speaking to other tools like that, is that really a good thing? I mean, it seems phenomenal in 18 months, but compared to something else, I mean...
Yeah. For eight months, they think it's pretty remarkable that we're there. We're doing a lot of, we also do a lot of promos that are coming up, like for instance, Refer a Friend is a program where you can get points for referring a friend. That can greatly increase our participation. So, there's lots of things that we're going to be doing going forward to that, again, as we do that marketing and like my working with communications, then that's a way to be able to have us keep growing people into it. We had a little delay too, this is our first year that we've had at the front end of the year, so we had a little delay getting our new people on because we had to work on some coding issues. So, just all kinds of little things to just keep expanding because people hear, oh my gosh, you made, you got how many dollars in gift cards? So, then that gets people excited and people, there's a lot of friend referrals getting people excited about the program too.
Which takes me to my next one, like sustainability.
Yeah.
What do you think about with sustainability with this?
You know, the thing that's really neat, they do, when you get to the new year, you get Kickstart points, you get 10% of your points back if you keep doing the program. And I think that that's the great thing. They actually told us from Blue Cross Blue Shield that this program is significantly less expensive for them to run. So, I really think we're looking at, my hope is, they haven't told me this, but my hope is they'll continue Vitality because it really apparently isn't as expensive for them to work. So, I hope that we get to continue it. Because again, when we're seeing data that's also going to be able to have them see the ROI on it, they'll be able to tell us, well, gosh, yeah, we're seeing healthcare costs go down because people are doing these less expense, you know, they're taking care of their health so they're not having emergency room visits that are expensive. So, that's kind of the whole idea is of wellness you're supposed to get back, six, you know, for every dollar you invest, you're supposed to get back six. So, if it's doing the right thing and the program's designed right, it's supposed to be a no-brainer to be able to do those kinds of programs.
And is there a way for there to be a teacher input, for them to put some input of like, this is great, it'd be great if it could do this or it could do that?
Yeah. They have a survey that we can have them do, but also, I have Wellness Champions in each school. And as I was looking at what I was designing for all summer, I really had a lot of input from Wellness Champions too to say, what would you like to see me add to this program? And so, I'm always asking and getting feedback from my Wellness Champions every month to say, you know, what are you guys running into? And I'm always in a constant conversation with people about, you know, the, the ins and outs of what's going on with the program. And so, that's the nice thing is we just have a constant interaction about that.
Thank you for sharing it all with us.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Your presentation. Next item is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. However, we do not have any blue cards, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just give me a second here. So, are there any items for removal from consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda, item eight.
Can I have a second, Piyush?
A second.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments or conflict statements? Seeing none, April will recall the roll.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Momgard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. Next, moving on to first reading from board committees, item 9.1.1, Run Resolution for Option Enrollment Students of 26, 27. Mike?
Yes. Good evening, board members. Each year, the board passes a resolution to approve and affirm the guidelines that will govern the process for handling option enrollment for the upcoming school year, which would be requested by non-resident students to attend Lincoln Public Schools. State law does also ask that we establish and communicate capacity limits to help facilitate the option enrollment process, and so that's what you see before you, Mike. You have three documents that are attached, the first of which is Policy 5119. There are no changes to that, that is just there simply for your reference as the following two documents reference 5119. You also have the Option Enrollment Resolution, which there are no changes to, but it does lay out the process and the timeline for handling and processing option enrollment requests, including option students who may seek to option out of Lincoln Public Schools. The third document that you have is Appendix 1 to Policy 5119. This is where we annually communicate and establish the capacity limits. This is something that is published on our website. What you see on there is you can see in the blacked-out lines on our website, they appear as red and in the right-hand column, you can see the option enrollment capacity column of open or closed. This is for families to be able to plan well in advance if they're seeking option enrollment so they can see which of our buildings and grade levels are open to option enrollment. I do want to share a couple of reminders just based on common questions that we take from families that come up with regard to option enrollment. First, I think it's important to remind the members of the community, you might be watching, that this is strictly for option enrollment. So, this has no impact on our tradition of ninth-grade students having open enrollment. Incoming ninth-grade students still get a chance to choose any of the high schools that they'd like to go to. This doesn't have anything to do with that. I want to be really clear about that for the members of our community who might be paying attention. This also doesn't change anything for our focus programs. Again, that is internal, is resident, they have their own separate capacity. We want all of those to be full and so they have their own seats for them. So, this doesn't have any impact on that. And then, finally, this information pending approval at second reading later in October then prompts the following day, then we would update our website with the most recent information for the 26, 27 school year with these capacity limits. The schools that you see closed to option enrollment actually don't represent a change from those closed currently right now for this school year. They're all currently closed to option enrollment as it is, as you see those sites, that just is a continuation of the trends of our enrollment and the subsequent impact on school capacity. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Thanks. Third report. On to 9.1.2, Unified Messaging Platform. Marilyn?
The Student Learning and Technology Committee previewed a presentation and proposal from Chief Technology Officer Kurt Langer regarding an updated unified messaging platform. This communication platform would assist staff in moving all electronic communications toward meeting ADA compliance as required after April 2026. In addition, the district would add communication tools they currently do not have access to in order to assist staff in communicating and engaging with students, families and the community of Lincoln. We have a short presentation by Kirk and I believe Mindy's joining him.
We're just going to kind of quickly step through our unified messaging proposal for all, just a little bit of forecasting. Mindy's going to talk about digital accessibility and our ADA conformance timeline and then I'll follow on with a bit of explanation around our LPS messaging, current LPS messaging environment versus what we would be looking at as a unified messaging environment, a cost comparison and then a preliminary implementation timeline and how that will ultimately meet our needs.
Thank you. Good evening, board. So, as we've discussed, there is a update to the American with Disabilities Act Title II Regulations, which requires any school district or government entity that serves more than 50,000 to make sure that their digital content meets the ADA conformance or ADA compliance. And that means anything from, that's delivered digitally, like our website, newsletters, PDFs, photos, videos, all of that needs to meet ADA conformance by April 2026. And so, we've been working really closely with computing services, library, library services, Chris Hefner and her team have been training her staff to help our schools so that we can prepare for that April 2026 deadline. And so, we are very appreciative of computing services. They're not just looking at the communications tools that we use, but all digital platforms across the district. So, they've been talking diligently with all of our vendor partners to see how and if their platforms meet ADA requirements. And they're also looking at new vendor partners to see if there's a way that they can assist us in this work to make sure that we're going to meet that deadline and meet the compliance and help us stay within that guideline. This is really an efficient way to get our content, it's a pathway for us to get our content. And so, we've been looking for new platforms to allow us to do that. And we also want to find efficiencies in our workflow because this is kind of a heavy lift at the beginning and then we want something that's sustainable as we're going through. So, as we've been working through this, we identified a timeline of how can we get our arms around this big project of, think of all the ways that we get content delivered to us digitally. And so, we're looking at school website content, which could include counseling centers and athletic websites, school handbooks or PDFs on our websites. We use School Messenger as our mass communication system that does text, phone calls and emails. And then, we have a lot of forms on our website as well and those could be PDF forms that need to be in compliance. And then, also, we need to look after April 26, how can we help teachers with their resources, any principal and administrator content, staff resources, professional learning content. We also need to think about for our communities and the families, school newsletters, social media, that is also fitting underneath this requirement. And then, any teacher-created content that is shared with students. And so, what we really were looking for was something that's going to help us meet that compliance deadline in an efficient and, and easy way. And I'm going to turn it back over to Kirk to describe what that is.
So, it isn't really a crisis, although sometimes the things like this that creep up feel a little bit like that because we have a lot of digital content sitting out there. So, invoking Winston Churchill may be a little over the top, but he did suggest we don't let a good crisis go to waste and I, we certainly didn't want to sort of waste this one. And what's notable about that is, is that we have looked at sort of unified systems for some time. But, one of the things that's always sort of held us back a little bit is, our LPS website is extraordinarily good. It is also extraordinarily complex in terms of how it's put together, the amount of things that are plugged into it, the number of outputs it provides and so on. And so, to some degree, we always sort of looked at that and said, well, you know, it's doing such a good job, let's, let's kind of, let's kind of hold off. We recognize that there are any number of other pieces and parts that we were foregoing as part of that, but we said, well, maybe we could look at that and just kind of continue down the same approach and add those a little bit at a time. What we want to be careful at in all of this is, is to recognize that in this case, when we talk about ADA conformance, it is, it is something that's going to catalyze this as I just suggested. It, it was a catalyst because it suggested we should look at something we weren't necessarily willing to look at before. But, really, all means all. That is our commitment to change. It is, so, that's really what's pushing this is, it's completely on point, completely on mission for us to head down this path. And then, really, we look at our vendor providers as partners, not as protectors. The one thing I've become very aware of is that the data that we have that's out on the web, that's out in various electronic formats, ultimately, those are our data as a district, therefore, it is ultimately our liability. We may, in working with others who provide us a really good pathway, really good guardrails in a, in a platform, we may well be able to much more ably achieve conformance and, equally important, maintain that. But, at the same point, ultimately, they're not going to stand in front of us, our data are ultimately ours. So, our LPS messaging environment as it sits right now, you can see sort of the way that it divides up, three big areas. There's email and other things that we do, but the LPS web presence as it's shown there, it is far and away the biggest, it has the most things plugged into it. It does a lot of heavy lifting. And then, we have the social network orchestration. This is so that we can make sure that those outputs that you see in the middle in the way of things like Instagram and Twitter or X, LinkedIn and Facebook, that we can also share out our information to those in a syndicated format so that if that's where people want to consume our news, so be it. So, in that regard, Class Intercom does a great job. They're local to Lincoln. We really enjoy working with them and they make it very possible for us to make sure that all of our schools don't have independent school accounts. We orchestrate all the way, all that back through a central account that then gets out to those locations or out on the web. Mindy and her staff are in a position to moderate as needs be and if something needs to be added or pulled back, they can do that in a very agile fashion. And then, our mass notification, as Mindy pointed out, School Messenger has been with us for 13 years. We've been on the platform and has done a very good job of providing access to our emergency notifications and, and school notifications as a matter of course, via email, via text and also via, via telephone or phone. So, it's, it's done great for us over that period of time. There have been a lot of changes as you might expect in that period of time. We also recognize some needs that we have. And with this, with this in mind, we don't have a standard way to do our electronic newsletters. And because of that, every, you know, the different schools are kind of on their own a little bit to do that. That also means that ultimately, they would need to address that in terms of conformance going forward. That two-way messaging, this is the ability for people like, for our classroom teachers, for our, for our athletic coaches, for our activity sponsors, for them to be in a position to very quickly be in a, sort of have a texting back and forth with students and their parents, but in a safe environment ultimately. And that's, that's something we've been, we've been after for quite some time and haven't had. And then, a district app to bring all those things together. And in that regard, we would really need to build that because I don't think we'd find somebody else to do it. We would ultimately have to try to stitch those things together, which is rather daunting in and of itself. So, that leads us really to looking away from this idea of a system comprised of modulars, a system comprised of modules to a modular system. And the one that we sort of, in looking at several different, that we came up with was from a group called Aptige. And in Aptige, basically, they bring all of those things together, all the ways to communicate and get them out. They provide therefore a single point for our integrations. In addition to that, when we did the gap analysis, part of the standard change management you do, it's one of the earliest things to see, well, what kinds of things do we, does this do, what kinds of things does it not do that we'll need? How will we get about that? The only really glaring thing that we found that was of considerable concern was with respect to being able to post video in the way of reels on Instagram and on Facebook. And it really is to do less with a deficiency that they have and more that it's rather difficult to take that alley-oop it over to coming through their platform out to these social networking outlets and also have them be, have them be conformant by way of ADA, which they'll need to be after April of next year. So, they sort of said, well, it's not really a deficiency as much as it's kind of a feature, not a, not a bug. Nevertheless, as Mindy would tell you, about 90% of the engagement that we have probably getting out to those, those outlets is in the way of video. So, that really led us to, to consider continuing to work with Aptige or, excuse me, work with, with our social network orchestration group, Class Intercom, and in conjunction with Aptige. And that's a, that's an integration we certainly are able and capable of doing to the extent that we need to. So, when we look at the difference between a unified messaging platform and the LPS messaging on the right, just the view of that would suggest a number of things, but I'll point these out. First of all, it is, our current environment and if we build it out, is somewhat technically inadequate. And the primary place that it's technically inadequate is, to the extent that it's housed on our network, if our network becomes inaccessible to the outside world, so does our website. And that's a real problem because if something's going on that's creating a problem with our, with our network, that's precisely one of the things we'd want to let people know. And we aren't able to because our website is inaccessible. Putting it out in the cloud gives us the opportunity to make sure that even if something happens that precludes access to the inside of our network, we can't be communicating[1735.82] in an able fashion via these tools. This environment is our current environment, and if we build it out, the system of modules, it's operationally inefficient. Look at the number of different places on the right that you have to plug all of those different things in, versus on the left, you plug them in once. So anytime in technology, you're doing the same thing over and over and over again, as in many cases, you end up with a situation where you also have that many more points of potential failure. Functionally, it's incomplete. We have to add those three things over on the far right for it to be or come up to standard with where we would be by adopting a unified messaging environment. Cohesively, or how it presents as a cohesive whole to our community, it's really somewhat incoherent. I've heard any number of parents say, I don't always know which app I'm supposed to have. And so we know that parent view is something that we have and will be with us, we can present that in the context of Aptogy, but we know we have a lot of other things that are being used, that we could bring into the fold and have a single place in LPS app. We really won't talk about Aptogy so much outside of LPS, we'll talk about the Lincoln Public Schools app. And finally, to build it out is fiscally inaccessible. And that's because when we look at the simple sort of stoplight report, if we do nothing, I would say from a, it's in yellow. The problem with doing nothing is, we still have to undertake the conformance, we still have to go through that exercise, and we have to make sure that we can maintain it, and we won't have the benefit of somebody who is basically putting something in front of us that has guardrails and that can help us do that and do it efficiently and well. If we're to build it, you can see what the cost on that, that is far and away the most expensive by a fairly significant amount. If we buy, we spend a little bit more, there's no question. But if you amortize that out quickly over the three years of the agreement that we have, that we're working on, it's about $20,000 a year, which, if you spread that across over 40,000 students, is somewhere south of $0.50 a student a year. It's an extraordinarily good value to get the sorts of abilities that we'll have in this environment. So to that end, it is a three-year commitment that we're suggesting. We have the option, or negotiate the option, to extend that licensing. When we get to year three, we can extend the licensing to additional years at a fixed, at the fixed cost of what we pay in year three. And then the annual payments, if you'll notice, are on a phased-in. The first year, we pay 50%, the second year, we pay 80%, and the third year, we pay the full fare, which again, we can continue in years four and five without any annual uplift. That's important when you look at what a preliminary timeline would look like to roll this out. What we really, the reason that we argued for what we did on having a phased-in approach is because we simply cannot do everything all at once. If we can't leverage it all at once, why should we be paying for it all at once? And that was sort of our position on it. The only two things that we have that are hard and fast dates, that are deadlines, first of all, the ADA conformance, which we've mentioned, that's at the end of April, essentially May 1st of 26. And our contract for School Messenger comes to an end at the end of June of 2026. If you note the legend in the lines, the blue indicates primarily where district staff are working on those things, the yellow are early adopters, that's where we're working with people who are already doing similar sorts of things in different environments, green is voluntary, they can, in that case, start or don't start, but it's just going to kind of continue out there. And ultimately, it's a little hard to see, but the orange is essentially saying, well, we'd really like to get, after the early adopters, and the red is really our principals, after we have an opportunity to address them in June and bring them up to speed, we really would like to finish with respect to the newsletters, to be ready to go for those newsletters for the next school year of '26, '27. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the mechanics of it. And then just lastly, sort of what we need and what we'll achieve. This does provide us a path to ADA conformance for the LPS website, that is no small thing. A tremendous amount of incredible work has taken place over time, that's also become a bit, as I said, a bit of an impediment for ever making a change. But if finally, we need to change, because we have something catalyzing that change, let's do something really well, and let's get some other things out of it. This will provide LPS, it will provide LPS web sustainability. And a very standard practice in the industry of information technology and education technology is to move to what they call commercial off-the-shelf software, which is software you buy, versus open-source software, which is something you use to build. The great thing about open-source software and building your own is, you can make it do anything you want. The trouble with it is, everything you have it do is what you have to ultimately sustain and maintain yourselves. Common school newsletter structure, as we've said, increases our coherence overall, again, bringing people back to that one place, reduces the burdens on school, burdens on school of them addressing the ADA with respect to that environment. Safe two-way texting to support classroom teachers, athletic coaches, and activity sponsors. For example, this would be, you might imagine, we put out a, something in the way of a, an alert, I'm not saying it will ever happen again, but it just could happen that we'd have inclement weather and we'd need to cancel school. It could be that you were planning on having tests that day, well, your classroom teacher could very easily or very quickly just send something out, drop it to the class, hey, guys, don't worry, guys and gals, don't worry, we're not going to, obviously, we're not at school today, but do take a little bit of extra time, take a look at your information, we are planning to have the test as we had planned, but we'll just have it when we get back into school. An activity sponsor, maybe at a forensics competition, for example, they decide to change rooms for the extemporaneous competition, it's an opportunity, and you have somebody who's also participating in debate, it's a way to basically text your kids to say, hey, they did move that, they did move the, where that extemp is taking place, we'd really like you to move, so that, you need to know that, and this is the time that it's going to start. And I have track coaches say all the time, they move stuff around in some of the track meets, and they like to be able to very quickly and ably get with their students. And so in that regard, it provides that, but is an entirely safe environment. Nobody needs to have other people's phone numbers on their phones or anything like that, this is an environment that allows us to do that, and it turns out, it ultimately, that ability is right in that same LPS web, or well, excuse, LPS app, that we'll be talking about, that district app, all of this takes place in that one environment. So that's kind of the, that's kind of our, maybe just a tad more than elevator pitch for you tonight, I know we've talked about this a bit before, but ultimately, we want to contextualize it kind of in where we are. I would say that we're working with, we're working with Mr. Gesford and Derek Aldridge on the legal sides of this. We still have some things we're working out, we want to make sure, then whatever we do, that, given that this also does factor in some of the ADA conformance, we want to make sure we do everything to press and get as much, ring as much certainty out of that as we possibly can. So that, we would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Great. Is there any discussion? Sounds like you covered it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to second reading, item 10.1.1, the 2025-26 LPS budget adoption. Is there a motion for approval? Piyush.
I move to adopt the budget.
Second, Annie?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the roll?
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. Next, item 10.1.2, the 2025-26 LPS tax request, do I have a motion for approval? Annie?
I move, we pass 10.1.2, 2025-26, Lincoln Public Schools tax request.
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. Item 10.1.3, policy 3760, safe driving record standards, do I have a motion for approval? Mara?
I motion to approve policy 3760, item 10.1.3, safe driving record standard.
Okay, John?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. Item 10.1.4, Northwest Activities Complex Baseball Field Lighting Project, do I have a motion? Barb?
I move approval of 10.1.4, Northwest Activities Complex Baseball Field Lighting Project.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the roll?
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. Next, item 10.1.5, policy 4000 Series Human Resources, do I have a motion for approval?
I move approval of item 10.1.5, policy 4000 Series.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, April, will you call the roll?
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. And that's it for second reading, we have no expedited emergency actions, no items removed from consent agenda, informational items reports, are there any reports from board committees? Are there any from special appointments?
I have one from the board committee. From the GRACE Committee, which stands for Government Relations and Civic Engagement. And along with me, Barb and Mara serve on that committee. We held a closed session to listen, discern, and discuss current and upcoming legislative issues at the state and federal level. Also, LPS Associate Superintendent Dr. Liz Standish is continuing her work on the School Financing Review Commission to review the state funding of schools. Again, these meetings are available on live stream from the Department of Education website, and that's Nebraska Department of Education website. We also received our annual update from Mindy Burbach, our Director of Communications, and a couple of very exciting highlights are that the LPS communications team received 12 national awards for stories created. And the team created and posted 377 stories on the LPS website to tell our stories and promote the great things happening in LPS. That's outstanding, that's more than one story a day. And because of our overlap with the community engagement part of the GRACE Committee, we also heard an update from Mindy and Kirk about the presentation that we just got done, hearing about our unified system. And we're all looking forward to seeing that system come into action. That's all I have, and I report from the GRACE Committee.
Great, wow. Anything from special appointments?
No, but can I say something? I just think, more I think about that, that's just amazing what our communications team has put together, and that, I don't know if you're on social media, our social media things, they pop up all the time for me, and I'm like, this is the most fun district, I just really want to go to school here. And I just think, congratulations to our communications team. So that's, and I have nothing to report on.
I was actually thinking of some of the same lines, like, sometimes your things you start at the beginning of the meeting, I keep looking at them, and I have a hard time trying to the meeting, because it's such an interesting thing, and I can't switch, actually. And are you going to go for 14 next year? I don't know.
She doesn't like to sleep, I hear.
Yeah.
No one on her team does either.
All right, John, from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Rounner. First, want to recognize the fact that at the recent area membership meeting for the Nebraska Association of School Boards, our very own board leadership, right here, President Rounner, Vice President Piyush Shavastev, were both recognized for levels of achievement awards in board member development, and for participation and engagement in workshops and member development activities sponsored by our Nebraska Association of School Boards. So just wanted to say a little shout-out there, we appreciate your servant leadership. I also wanted to note that our board president was recently recognized by Rotary with a special distinction. Bob received an award that's presented to a Rotarian district-wide who's made a monumental contribution in one or all avenues of Rotary service. This was the Cadwallader Award, and it's been around since 1963. The entire Rotary District, 5650, recognizes each year one outstanding Rotarian, Bob Rounner. So, wanted to thank Dr. Gelati for convening the first of our quarterly parent advisory committee meetings. Just yesterday, it was my privilege to just offer a welcome to the group. Mike provided an excellent overview of our educational services team, and then we were privileged to receive a special presentation on library services from Dr. Chris Hefner. I wanted to thank Dr. Hefner and her team for the outstanding work to ensure that we always place students at the center of learning and personalize that learning through qualified school librarians in every school, encouraging reading for all the right reasons, pleasure, curiosity, intellectual development. Couple notes on some opportunities to connect directly in our wonderful schools. Last week, Dr. Johnson Farr and I were thrilled to participate in the Constitution Day Assembly and Program at Ruth Hill Elementary. Principal Emily Wiebeck and her team did a tremendous job of planning the event and incorporating student voice and participation at every level. It was a joyous community event, and already on our calendars, I think in January of '26, will be the formal celebration of Hill's 50th anniversary. And just yesterday, Bob and I had the opportunity to visit Eastridge Elementary and drop in on classrooms with Principal Tracy Booth. Eastridge has a school-wide commitment to fostering respect and encouraging and even measuring effort, and it was just evident throughout the classrooms we visited, it's great to see the Eastridge Eagles internalizing the importance of effort in achieving excellent outcomes, and to see our teachers in that school helping students actualize positive persistence. That's my report for tonight.
Yeah. I actually add to that, that the, I talked to my colleagues, some of our meetings with schools have been really informative, the candor of our principals, the feedback, and Eastridge is great, because that's where my daughters went, there's still one teacher there that had them, so, but that was a great visit, yeah.
As our schools are.
Anything from the financial report, Liz? Okay, announcements of upcoming events, September 25th, we have the Open Sky Policy Symposium at Innovation Campus, October 1st, Chamber Coffee at 8:00 AM at the Chamber Office. October 5th, Randolph Elementary has the 100 Year Celebration from 2:00 to 4:00 PM in the afternoon. October 7th is State of the City at 7:30 AM with Lincoln, at the Lincoln Marriott Cornhusker Hotel. October 11th is the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet at 6:00 PM at MBC, C-Suites. And October 14th is the board meeting at 6:00 PM back here at the Joel. We have no other public comment, I understand we have a request for closed session. Piyush?
I move that we go into a closed session for number one, negotiations, number six, personnel, and number seven, legal advice.
Okay, do I have a second? Annie?
I second that, and this would be poster ESU meeting.
Yes. Okay. April, will you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes. We will move into recess after the ESU board meeting and go into close after that, so.
I call to order this meeting of the Board of Education ESU 18 meeting. Please call the roll call.
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Goodwin?
Here.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Present.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Here.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Here.
Dr. Rounner?
Here.
Mr. Shavastev?
Present.
We have Open Meetings Act posting, and it's in the foyer coming into this meeting room. We have meeting minutes from September 9th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they are approved. I have not received any blue cards for public comments. We'll move to the consent agenda. And I don't see anything particularly on consent agenda. Then we're going to go to, we don't have anything on first reading, we have second reading, recommended for action. We have the 9.1.1, 2025-26 ESU 18 budget adoption. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt 9.1.1, the 2025-26 ESU 18 budget adoption.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
April, please call the roll.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgaard?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Do we have a motion for 9.1.2, 2025 ESU 18 budget adoption? Do we have a motion for 9.1.2, 2025-26 ESU 18 property tax request? Peush?
I move that we approve 9.1.2, 2025-26 Educational Services Unit 18 Property Tax Request.
Second, Annie?
I will second that.
Please call the roll.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovek?
Yes.
Ms. Momgaard?
Yes.
Dr. Rounner?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastev?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
I assume we do not have another report from the superintendent, but I'll check in.
Nope, we're good.